Okay, Mary. What time is six thirty seven?
That's when you want to release the church.
All in favor? But the record we flagged that came on the second session.
What time?
Six thirty seven. Six thirty seven, no decisions were made and no votes were taken. Okay. Alan, do you want to come on up?
I'd like for Cheyenne Watts and her mother or father or both to come up with it. And she's really too young to be an adoptive highway. She's gotten into recycling. She's been doing it for almost a year or maybe even a little bit longer. Her mother brings the stuff that she picks up to the post office. I pick it up at the post office, take it home, count it, and then take it to Charleston to recycle it. And I've been keeping count on it. And in a year's time, she's picked up or sent me at least fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred plastic bottles.
Wow.
That's a lot of handling. It's not a lot of weight, but it's a lot of handling. And I just wanted to present her with this certificate for the environment, at least, you know, the things she's doing.
She's thankful.
Yeah. Good job.
Thank you.
Maybe that'll give other kids an incentive to do the right thing, at least I think the right thing.
She's from Harts.
Harts.
Harts, yeah. She's from Harts.
Well, she's a Watts, too, and that's what I married, so.
Well, you can't go wrong.
Don't keep sending me the bottles. And I'll do recycling for you. Think it's pretty good for just an eight-year-old.
Yes, yes.
Trust me, she knows how to put it on you when you don't pull your weight.
Is Mike Calhoun here? All you have. Mike Calhoun called and asked if he could, and he hasn't here tonight. Okay, Duke Gator, you're up.
I think the commission is going back to September. On several occasions, I've asked for the commission's decision on whether the Bluegrass and Gospel event that we've had the past seventeen years would be going forward. We've reached the point where we've really already delayed beyond the point that if we had the event, it will be adversely affected. But I've not been given a decision. I'm just asking for a decision as the event going forward or not. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
In your email that you sent us the other day, you mentioned that you had delayed. You felt like you'd waited to, like, get some information.
Oh, yeah, that's why I say it's already been adversely affected. If you were to say, do it, it won't be what it has been at the same time. And if it's not to continue, now's as good a time as any, meaning there wouldn't be any benefit to saying one last time. You know, if there's not a will to continue it beyond this June, you know, there's no reason to continue. If we were to say, well, we're going to take a year off, that would even do more damage than not doing even a smaller or scaled back event.
I've been thinking about this a lot since I got your email and thinking about it. I thought maybe it would be better to wait till the fall of the year. Have you all ever had the dispense for three of June?
It started the first eight years, probably. It was in August. And all we had was thunderstorms and ninety-five degree heat.
I was thinking September.
So we moved. If you were thinking fall, then yeah, definitely pass September. What you run into in the fall, of course, is high school football, college football, every kind of autumn celebration across the state as far as strawberry festivals or pumpkin festival or any of those other kinds of things. And there is some effect of, of course, not having a consistent time if you haven't. When we moved from August to June, you know, we planned it far enough in advance that, you know, I think the damage was, in terms of moving it, was minimized. But, you know, you run into things virtually any time of the year. But if the county were to decide, they want to have it, but they want to have it at a different time. I mean, it's not my festival. It's not my event. I didn't start it. I don't get a penny. Haven't since taken office for doing anything associated with it. It's always been funded by the county commission. If the county commission says, now, we don't have the money, we can't do it. If you can find other sources of funding, you have our blessing, but we can't fund it, that's, you know, that's the commission's problem.
Well, I think, you know, we all support it, and I hate, I know, we all hate to see it end. But, I mean, you know, in the past, it was paid out of our Paul Severance budget where we made all of our contributions to activities like that, the fishing tournament, shooting match, other things that the county sponsored that we haven't been able to do. I mean, we didn't budget any of that stuff. As a matter of fact, I went to the Parks and Rec myself and I asked them to pick up the, and help sponsor, or sponsor, the fishing tournament and shooting match because we just didn't have the money to even do that, those two things. So we've asked them to help us. But, you know, this time last year in April, we got a hundred and forty thousand dollar Paul Severance check. This April, we got an eight thousand dollar check, which was lower than what we thought it would even be. So, I mean, I don't know where we would get it, to be honest. And I had mentioned to Mary to suggest to you to go to the parks and see if they could help you or have an avenue to maybe a grant or something that they could help. But if we do, you know, have to extend it a little bit later, I would think, because it is what about a month, you know?
When it's been held.
But that's just my, I mean, that's mine.
Yeah, I'm just.
I sent you an email.
And I appreciate that, and I know where you stand on it. And so I was here for a commission's decision.
Well, you know, and for me, you know, to air it out, I mean, I feel like it's a Parks and Rec decision. We give them money, up to fifty thousand dollars, a franchise fee. And I really believe that this is something that they should support if they choose to. But it's up to their board.
And I understand it. And as I replied to you in email, I came to the commission because that's what I've done for seventeen years. It's been the commission's thing, and if the commission won't, can't, whatever, don't, you know, for the immediate future, that would seem to me to be the end. That doesn't mean that it can't be resurrected by someone, but I was just, you know, following the same path that we followed for seventeen years. It was started by the commission, and it's been a good thing.
And I agree. I think if I was a leadership one, I would, that's why you hate to see stuff in when people in the county benefit from it.
So I don't know that I need something more formal. I've got no indication that the county can or will be sponsoring it. If that's the county's decision, then that's all I'm here for.
He was under public comment, so I don't even really think we can vote on it.
Can't make his decision.
Okay. Well, Jim, we appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Now under discussion and concern, possible action. Rick McDowell with the Farmland Protection Board. I know there's a letter in here.
There is a letter in here. You all remember quite a while ago, we had the issue about the soils, that there were certain soils that the state would pay money for and there were others that they wouldn't. And one of those soils that they would not is the soil that they call any soil. I'm not sure how to say it, whether it's Nelsie silt, long, whatever.
Okay, tell us what you think of it.
No, no, no. I was about to pronounce it.
So we had, when we started looking at this and saw that the original farm that we were looking at on the dairy road had a significant amount of that soil, we started the process to try to get the state to declare that soil locally important. That was, our first request was in July fifteen to one of the staff people at the Guyanese Conservation District. Nothing happened. We talked to Corinne Powell in September. She said, you ought to talk to Boyd Meadows, who's the chair. We asked to get on the agenda. Nothing happened with that. In January, we emailed Corinne again, nothing happened. In April, there was one more email, and she said at that point, her words were that the Guyanese Conservation District has not supported the idea. So from what I understand, this is pretty much dead and old. That's what she said. She also carboned that to Joe Hatton, who's the Morgantown NRCS director. And Joe chimed in and agreed with Corinne, but said, until the district or some other elected unit of governments admits a request, I cannot facilitate a letter to the state conservation. Well, so you guys are, you know, definitely, definitely an elected unit of government, so the Farmland Protection Board thought maybe if the commission would make this request, it might go along. We don't know for sure going forward, what kind of an impact this might have, but this soil is significant in Lincoln County as a soil that is used in a lot of farmlands and produces a lot. So that's what this letter is about.
So as far as your easements, your conservation easements?
Yes.
If we could get this any soil changed to locally important, it would help the match.
It would help the match, exactly.
From the NRCS.
Right. Because then it would be a significant soil rather than just a non-significant soil.
I mean, to be honest, I don't know. And I told you this at the board meeting. I don't know that they're going to act on this. Will it hurt to try? I don't think so. But I didn't want to write a letter without them knowing and us talking about it and thinking, I mean.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I think they need to step in this process, you know, because if you don't do that, you're not going to get as much federal match. And that was what we assumed starting out, we were going to get.
We were going to get more.
Would you like a motion for you to send that out?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? I am.
Here's the original. Do you just want to sign that? I'll go and send it to you.
Now, if they do change that soil classification, it would be the fifty-fifty, right?
Yes, for those soils in a farm, you know, that have that.
All right.
And while that's happening, let me give you an update on the three wins. We're almost there. Hard to believe with Camp Lake due, but we're moving forward.
I thought you were going to resurrect the green rice water.
No, 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 thank you.
Martha don't hear no more about that.
Yeah, Martha said she could put in a system now. She's hard to imagine.
She could be the new chair. We're starting the fifteenth of June, and we'll go through August with these.
Okay. Do you know if the trial rivers, are they going to charge you again for that?
I have not heard. I sent them a request, just sort of saying, here are the dates, can you cover it, and haven't heard back. Traditionally, they're a little slow getting back to us.
And the way that we posted and all that, it is took up.
Yes, Hunter, he has started.
Okay. Good.
So I'm not sure. Should I?
Well, I mean, we're not going to know how, an idea how much.
How should I move forward on that with them about pay? What would you suggest I do?
We probably should talk to them, because before, they didn't charge us, but since we haven't gave them any contribution, they charged. But it may be ahead for us to give them a contribution so that they don't charge us for that. I don't know. That's something to think about.
Okay.
See what it's going to be. Okay, there's your letter.
Thank you. I will send it. We'll see what happens. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick. Okay. The next thing on the agenda was Alan's holder with the flood mitigation grant. And Alan, I told him it really wasn't necessary for him to come because I've been with Rick Hilton, working with him on this. And he sent me two letters, and I'm trying to hold back him. I thought he was going to say that I hadn't been able to come. As most of you know, we've been working on a flood mitigation grant for the county. We had a public meeting at Duval, was that then a month ago?
That was.
First of March.
March twenty-first.
And had a huge turnout. I think we have thirty applications. Tomorrow's the deadline for the cutoff for the applications. So we had a great response. A lot of people were there. Rick was there and had the floodplain maps, and people checked if they were in floodplain or not. Was that real informative, wasn't it? I think it went real well. But anyway, that public meeting was part of this grant application process. We needed to do that prior to submitting the grant. So we did that. We have the grants. Like I said, the cutoff will be tomorrow. So now what we need to do, Alan suggested that we have a committee, set up a committee to review the applications and rank them based on the guidelines from FEMA. His suggestions or his recommendation for the committee, he would like for Francis Holden from the Lincoln County Emergency Services to be on there, Rick Hilton, our floodplain manager, who's been working with us on this, a representative from the assessor's office, and a representative from the county commission. So we need to, that's who he would like to have on the committee. So we need to get ahold of guy and see if he wants to or have somebody from his office, how he feels about it, but I think that won't be a problem. And then KK has volunteered to be our representative. So I really, I think I need, we should do it this way. Need a motion to set up this committee to review the FEMA applications for the FEMA grant. I think there's twelve million dollars of money allocated for the grant originally, wasn't there? I think some of it's already been.
Some of it's already been, well, allocated, but there's still significant money there that Lincoln County should get some of that.
And what this program is, it's a buyout for people who have been flooded numerous times during the flood zone, and so it would buy them out. I think they did it, bought some property out after the two thousand and three flood and worth of sales. So it's the same type thing. But the deadline for the application is the end of May, so we need to move on this quick. If we approve for this committee, then you all, I mean, it can get started.
Why don't we go ahead and appoint the committee as?
Okay.
I'll.
All in favor of saying I am? Okay, the next, the next thing with this grant. Before the applications are submitted, there has to be an appraisal done on the properties that we submit. He thinks that the appraisals are going to cost between three hundred and three fifty, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Rick, as I'm trying to explain it.
You're doing good.
So.
Let me ask you, can someone from the assessor's office do that?
No, it has to be a certified, like a surveyor, I guess, appraiser.
A real estate appraiser.
Right. With, can't be, as I said, it can't be one of our people. It has to be a separate entity doing. So the catch is, we have to come up with the money upfront. They will reimburse us for half of the appraisal fee, even if we don't get it. If we get the grant, they will reimburse us for the whole haul. So Alan is asking that we approve up to ten thousand, up to ten thousand dollars. I don't think it will be that much. I was thinking if, you know, if we do send in twenty applications, at three hundred dollars, that would be six thousand dollars. But, right, we will, you know, I think it would be safe to say we will approve up to ten thousand, even if they use the whole ten thousand. We know we're going to get five of it back, possibly all of it. I think it's worth it. This is a great, and I really think we have a good chance of getting it. I mean, nothing's guaranteed, but.
I move that we appropriate ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Up to there.
Up to, not to exceed, not to exceed. Okay, all. All right. Moving right along. We're getting through this faster than I thought we were. Okay, we have the Lincoln County Coon Hunters Association on the agenda, and we have three of their members here tonight. I think John Paul is the president, then Barry Quinn and Leonard McCormick are members have been, probably, did you start at Leonard?
No, no, we, twelve, we've been twelve years, Rob, or I.
Twelve years.
Yeah, and just keep applying, yeah.
Okay. I'm glad you all came tonight, so you can, I know a little bit about you, but you can chime in. I feel like I'm doing all the talking. You have about a hundred members, right?
We have a hundred members on the book right now.
Okay.
As of this year.
And you do eight, nine licensed?
Eight UKC classes, and the fall, which are pleasure hunting events. We have the youth hunt, the youth hunting. I think we had twenty, I think we had twenty-eight kids in picture last year, and that's an all that venture, he was costing nothing. I think exactly thirty-two involved in four of those pictures. But we're having people of Suffolk County, Lakeland, you have a pretty good turnout. Second Saturday of the month, we have what you call a trade day, and our coldest day this winter, five degrees, we have always had a big weather. You know, it's moved along pretty good.
Mr. Paul, you, you have a fifty-year lease. You're twelve years into it.
Yes.
Is it my, what I understand, is it some of the language that's in the lease?
No, we would like to purchase it.
Yeah.
Because it's hard to, you know, we're spending quite a bit of money right now, too. I put down, the club, we put down a hundred and some tons of gravel just a couple weekends ago. Last year, we put down, like, fifty sometimes. We redone the rest room for women, kids, clean, it's not our kitchen. But we put quite a bit of money in it, and people, you know, club members, feel like we should own it, we're putting this, they're putting this much money into it.
I personally don't have a bitter problem. I would just give it to you for a dollar and think that that would be the right thing to do. And I didn't even think about this before we came down here, but since the county owns it, we can't give it to you. We can't even sell it to you for a dollar because we have to auction everything off. So in order for us to do that, we would have to put it up for public bid. But I, you know, I wouldn't have a problem. I know you all need some more security. I mean, I don't blame you for not wanting to top a lot of money and think that you could lose it. So if we could change, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with changing the lease to say that you could use it as long as you were a functioning operational club, just forever you can use it. And, you know, with the clause that if you, and it's in here in the lease, that if you disband, that it would come back to us. But do whatever you want with it for as long as you all are doing what you're doing, because I think you're doing a great thing, but.
Yeah, that has to be the same long.
Yeah.
We just wanted to take some stipulations here. Doctor Dyer was involved in the, when we got the lease, and we took just a shell of a building, and I'll give you a little bit of history on the building. Johnny Tully and a lady, they made means, they took the lead on this to get it, and the county commission wouldn't give them land there. So they went privately and made the lot that it's on. It's in a corner. It was nothing but a hillside and brush on the end of the lot. And we're very, very appreciative of the county commission for how they have been to us. But there's stipulations in it. Like John said, we've spent money head over heels, and this membership, as the year goes along, as the people come in and hunt, that's when they take membership. So our membership probably, John, last year, probably exceeded two hundred members, didn't it? And we get a yearly board is what we get with the membership as they come in. In two thousand and two, UKC is one of the biggest dog registries in the world. And in two thousand and two, we hosted the West Virginia State Championship Hunt, and they list all of their hunts, all the states, all the big national hunts that they have. And Lincoln County was number eighteen out of the top twenty hunts in the United States. And it's local people, you know, we, we feed people when they come in there. Like John said, we look after the children. We have grandparents, we have children, we have wives. There's no cursing, there's no drinking. We're well-established and well-organized. Like you said, if you, if you can clean up the lease and take some of those stipulations out of there.
And we don't have a problem with.
It's as good as owned.
Yeah, we will do anything. I think, after I had married Paul and Lacey and made them a hobby event, and the thing that I think if I were you all concerned me in the lease is the sixty-day written notice that we can give you and take it back.
Well, that and some of the reasons that you could take it away from us.
Right, right.
And we've served twelve years there, you know, and we carry insurance. We're always insured, fully insured there, and we, that sounds good.
I think when we make decisions here, that we try to make decisions based on how it affects the people that are, you know, using it. You know, you all put a lot of time, sweat equity into this, so I think it would be a win-win situation for us to say, you all could use this, kind of have, take this fifty years out, an open-ended lease, as long as you have all these other requirements, the insurance, your board, you know, you can't dissolve, disband, and then the place sit down there. You know, it would come back, with the reverter clause, it would come back to us. I think it's a win-win for us and you all. But we want you to grow and expand and fix your place and do whatever you need to do down there to get better.
We have a breakdown. I don't have it with me. Actually, what the coon hunters and the hunters put into a county, I mean, like, we got, like, just an individual person has, like, two thousand dollars of hunting equipment just on those dogs. A new truck, dog food, two, three hundred pound of dog food per month, and it really amounts up. I could get a copy of that for you, but it's really an input into the county.
Right. Well, people come in and buy gas or go to this.
That's a good thing. You've got people coming out of county in the city.
Right.
On a, on a good night, we'll see a hundred people on Saturday night. I'm going to say fifty of those people, at least fifty, because, you know, far up the way they're, which I hate to say, eating, I would love to say, eating in our restaurant, but, you know, they eat, they buy gas, they're spending money right here in Hamilton, though.
That's the kind of things we need to encourage, is help stimulate the economy here.
UKC has moved the youth national to West Virginia this year because West Virginia is actually one of the better youth groups involved.
Right, and I think that's an important thing, too.
And we could bring it up to Lincoln County, that would be embarrassing.
Yeah, you know, these kids or young adults, you know, one of the things I learned from running around my brother's groundhog was that it's a very energetic sport. I mean, it's not fox hunting, sitting at a fire and listening to the dogs run. It seemed to me that when I coon hunted, if I was in the holler, they'd treat it on the ridge, and if I was on the ridge, they'd treat it in the holler. And, but I do think that it's, it's an important.
And, but I do think that it's, it's an important thing that we pass on to our, through our generations. Because that's, it's, it's physically a very good thing to do for your health. It's a very, the coon hunters are some of the best people amongst themselves and with the public, I think. You know, the thing I was thinking of is we might even want to look at this as putting a clause in that says, whatever you all put in there, whatever it's worth, we may, if we decide to do something, we have to give you all the money back for what you put into it. I mean, I think something along that science, that way needs to be looked at. That way, you all don't have reservations about whatever you put in there. You know that if y'all did, you know, something would happen and we would have to use it, we would have to give you all the money back on what you invested in that. Because it was just ground when y'all took it, you know what I mean? There wasn't nothing and you all take it and made it what it is. And I think that as far as recreation in our county, if you, if you look at what people like. Once you get a coon hunter hooked, he's hooked for life. I mean, you know, whether he's got an AKC or UKC dog or not, or whether, I mean, I can remember up on Ten Mile when we had all the hunts up there and everything. And it was a big deal, you know? We don't have a lot of community things to do around here anymore, since they combined all the schools and everything. And to me, that, that'd be a perfect place for those people that like to do that, to be able to come together and learn how to do it right and learn how to obey the laws and things like that. But I, I think that there's nothing more that I know that adults do with kids better than hunting or fishing with them. And so I, I, you know, I think that you all done, and I know, having been here a while, I know what all you all have done. And, and we see the benefit economically from that, just like you're talking about. People spend money when they come into these events and that's what we want them to do. I mean, you're all helping us help the county by doing that. So I don't see any, any problem at all, just revise this, when you all feel comfortable with it and then we can adopt it and once you do it.
We, after Ever Sanction Hunt, we keep on hand like twenty-five to thirty, forty trophies, like, say like this. And every child shows their dog, it's not Sanction, but every child there shows their dog. And I specter some children out of our club that has probably a hundred trophies. But, you know, they still want that trophy.
They love that trophy.
And that's a promotion that we, we use. And one thought I want to implement, if, if you guys refunding money to anything on that strikes a thought with me, there's another issue in that lease and myself, I'm favoring, if what you said first on the lease. Give us a lease on that, take the stipulations out of there, like we'll carry the insurance. And let us stay there until somebody don't, never want to do nothing again and you can have a bite.
Hey Leonard, would you care if we go ahead and move on this, send it to the prosecutor? And then let you all look at it, see what you think, and then.
We'll even get a committee, if you want. We'll even get a committee from the club to just sit down where it'll be, you know, business matter for those two there.
We can, we can get it, you all can look at it, then we'll bring it back before the commission, they can give you the authorization to sign it.
I motion to go ahead and send the prosecutor for the revision and give you, give you the permission to talk with them if they're okay with it. If you would.
Okay. All in favor, I am.
Aye.
All right. We have no unfinished business. So onto new business. Do I have a motion to accept all the new business as listed on the agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor, I am. Okay. I thought I have order here. Under open discussion, there's one thing I want to mention, don't want to forget. They're having a valve opening ceremony at the Woodville Volunteer Fire Department on May twenty-first, that's the one. To celebrate the new water over there in Alphabell. They're calling it a valve opening ceremony, so. And they've invited the governor, Manchin, a lot of people to come. They wanted me to invite the rest of the commission and anybody in the public who would want to come. They're going to have refreshments and things, so I wanted to remember to mention that. May twenty-first at eleven at the Woodville Fire Department. KK, did you have anything?
I'm good.
Doc, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to address a few, I just had a few comments about some of the things that's put in the paper, something that Simmons, the Lincoln County Commission said. One was concerning the Lincoln PSD giving them the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. As, as those people that have been here know, we've also asked all regular agencies, including the Department of Justice, to look into what happened to the money originally. But in not giving that money, we would have cost us somewhere.
About twelve million dollars.
About twelve million dollars.
In water damage.
And they would not, we would not be doing this water valve opening over there that Ms. Sims would like us to do. We wouldn't have got the one and a half million dollars for the Lower Mud River project, which is now fully funded. So I just wanted to make comments so people understood why we did what we did when we did it and what we're doing to make sure it doesn't happen again. The other thing, there was some comment concerning the settlement that we met tonight on, with the attorneys. When I met with the attorneys today, the executive session, was the first time I met with attorneys concerning this department. So we had no idea, in fact, I read it in the paper before I saw that what was happening. And, and I, you know, I, I feel that, well, we know now that there was no decision made on that tonight. And that we will look at it and make a decision with what we feel is best for the people of Lincoln County and try to do it in a manner that's consistent with what the legal settlement would be. The other comment was made concerning the purchase of the church for the judicial annex. And we were under instructions from the Supreme Court to find us a judicial annex. We were told to do that. We looked at multiple, and this was in when Mr. McCann was president. We looked at multiple possibilities as far as what we could use for judicial annex for our family court and our magistrates. The cheapest one that we felt at the time was to buy this church next door and use coal severance money to renovate that so we could comply with what the Supreme Court wanted us to do. Since that time, as we all know and have heard, we don't have coal severance money. We've had less and less each year and now we don't have any, or not much left, other than what we've saved so far. That's the reason there hasn't been any movement on the church. But as you noted, you were glass meeting, we, and we did tonight, offered, asked for bids on that. We put an electrical end to that so we could go in and start doing it in phases as we can afford to do it. But I don't want anybody in this county to think this commission wastes, wastes people's money. I don't want them to think that we do things for any other reason other than do what we think is best for the people of this county. And, and I know these two people here and the people I've worked with many years before, that we felt that way and that's the way we are now. So any questions concerning what this commission does, we, we're very open in what we do and we have very good reasons for what we do. But I just wanted everybody to know that. And, and just as, I've been around here a long time and worked with the Coon Club and multiple, multiple hunting and fishing things were on. And I think that there's nothing more important in our county, because we don't have half the authority now, is we want to have to develop our home recreation, our hunting and fishing and trail riding and things like that. And we are planning on doing that or in the process of looking at different places to do that. But there's nobody can tell people to go out and do what you guys do better than yourself. And, and you know, the things you all done for this county, we don't always see, well, people, not coon hunters, don't see it anyway. But, but we know up here how important you all are to the economic stimulus. And we want other groups to do things similar to what you all do, to get, get these young people out into things that they should be into instead of the problem we have with our drugs and things like that. But that's all I have to say.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn until our, our next regular session meeting, which will be on May nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen at sixteen?
I'll move, I'll second.
All in favor, I am.
Aye.
Our adjourned, do you come in?